Redevelopment Agency. This meeting is taking place on Tuesday, October 13th, 2015, and it's currently 7:00 PM. I'd ask our deputy clerk to do the roll call. Present.
Vice Mayor Moore.
Present.
Councilmember DeLloso.
Here.
Councilmember Harvey.
Here.
Councilmember Landman.
Here.
Okay, thank you. Now if you wouldn't mind, if you would mind, if you would join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening, Council. For the benefit of the public, my name is George Barrett. I'm a former Cattati City Council member here, and I want to thank the City Council for having the Pledge of Allegiance, and I want to bring this point up to the members of the audience and the people who are watching from home, that it was a few years ago that we almost lost the Pledge of Allegiance here in the city chambers. Councilmember Bob Coleman had argued that we should take up the issue of possibly eliminating the Pledge of Allegiance from these proceedings, and a few of us objected, and he did not get his way. But, you know, Mr. Coleman was a troubled man, he had many issues, he never said the Pledge of Allegiance, not that it was required by law or required of anybody in these chambers, but the fact is, he didn't say the Pledge of Allegiance. And I think he hated this country, and I think he was a communist, he had many issues.
Can we please stick to the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes, this is all surrounding the person who asked-
You're talking about somebody who's since passed away, so-
The person who asked to have the Pledge of Allegiance removed. I want to speak about the process in which we came about almost losing the Pledge of Allegiance because of a particular council member who wanted to impose his will on the rest of us in this room, and may try to make a convincing case why we should actually follow his thoughts and wishes, and it's something I think that we need to review from time to time, that, you know, the fact that now that the council has honored Mr. Coleman with a monument downtown underneath the American flag, I think it really did the man an injustice for someone who would never pledge allegiance to the flag, but we still have it, and by the grace of God, we still have the Pledge of Allegiance here. I want to thank the council for continuing with it, and I'm very proud to be part of a process that was able to protect the Pledge of Allegiance in these proceedings. Thank you.
Okay, now we'll move to approval of minutes and notice of waiving of reading of all resolutions and ordinances introduced and or adopted under the agenda for our regular meeting on September 22nd.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Comments for making public?
On last month's agenda?
On minutes.
All right.
Just one before, thank you.
I don't refute that. Yes, Ms. Alderman?
We've, I wanted to comment on the minutes, because we did this a couple of weeks ago, a couple, sorry, a couple of meetings ago, we're still not getting any, it says Lori Alderman commented, especially in citizens' business, we would, I'd like to have what we commented about. It shouldn't just be, "We supported," "We opposed," it should be, "What we commented." This is the citizens', this is the people's house, I mean, it's all about you guys, and it's nothing about us, so that's what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Barrett, you also wanted to comment on last month's meetings, certainly.
The minutes are also absent of the fact that we had a citizen from Cattati by the name of Lillian, who came forth not once, but twice, to ask the city council that her electronic hearing device was not working, and that she was being denied access to these meetings. And she was disabled. I also have a hearing disability, and it is true that my hearing device, electronic hearing device, was not working, and hers was not working, and in doing so, and in proceeding with the meeting, the council violated the American Disabilities Act, and I asked for the council to please adjourn the meeting to a date and time certain in the future, and the council refused. And I want the record to reflect that that request was put on the record, and Ms. Lillian was deprived her right to participate in her body government, and she left these chambers in disgust and frustration. Somewhere in these minutes, that needs to be reflected. I ask you not to sweep this issue under the rug, and please have her comments and my comments reflected in the minutes that there was a violation, and these electronic hearing devices did not work. Now, tonight, they are not working again. It's been three weeks, these are not working. The sound is coming and going sporadically, and again, you're in violation of the American Disabilities Act. I ask you, if you know the law, you have a duty to adjourn this meeting to a time and date certain when these works. You cannot refuse access to these meetings to people with disabilities any longer. It's a stain on this city. Thank you.
Thank you. And just for the record, I do remember Ms. Lillian participating quite well, and had her comments expressed on the one item that she wanted to appear on, so, and then she left after that item was finished, so I think she did quite well in her participation at the meeting. Yes, Mr.?
Madam Mayor, the minutes do reflect that Lillian Payne Vaughn of Cattati addressed the city council and was recognized by Mayor Skilman.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. So, going back to the minutes, I have a motion and a second, and all of those are in favor, we all said aye, so I'll have the record reflect that it was a 5-0 vote in favor of approving the minutes from the September 22nd meeting. So now we'll move on to housekeeping items, and I apologize for demoting you earlier. I will ask our city clerk, not our deputy city clerk, to read the housekeeping items. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. A few housekeeping items. For the benefit of everyone in attendance, please observe the following: silence electronic devices, including cell phones. Audience members are advised that the chamber and hallways carry sound in this very old building, so please keep conversations to a minimum or conduct them outside the building. Photographs or video recordings using tripods or other means that would be distracting are to be taken only from the designated media area along the south wall of the chamber. Members of the public wishing to address the council are asked to complete a separate speaker card for each item. Speaker cards are located on the table inside the entrance to the chamber. Place the speaker card in the designated tray located by the city clerk, and when their name is announced, speakers should come forward to the podium and direct their comments to the city council.
Thank you very much. Yes, Mr. Barrett?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. For the benefit of our viewers at home, and the people, and the folks in the chambers tonight, I want to remind everyone that we have no housekeeping rules, we have no housekeeping items that were ever voted on by any city council in the history of this town. This is an issue that's been going on for a couple of years now, and it is further proof how sloppy this city is being run. Staff evidently has put together some rules for conduct of the members of the public, and the city has failed to ratify them, discuss them, put them on the agenda, open them up for public comment, and it is wrong. You think that you're somehow special and above proper procedures to follow laws and procedures that other cities across the state follow. No other city in Sonoma County has housekeeping rules such as this, and if they do, then they have probably codified them with a vote. And where was these rules when I was sitting on the council, and people were bussed in or brought in from other cities to shake their fists at me when I was on the council, justifying my votes and my positions on this council, against higher taxes, against declaring fiscal emergencies? Where were the housekeeping rules there, when people were making funny faces, and shaking their heads, and shaking their fists? There was no housekeeping rules then, was there? We need a rule here for the council that forbids council members to mock members of the citizenry by telling them after we sit down that what we say is unbelievable, because that's what Mr. DeLloso did at the last meeting, "Unbelievable," quote unquote. That's a violation of the Code of Ethics, Section 5 of this city, and it's wrong. You need also a housekeeping rule that says that you will not confuse passion and love with anger. Just because people come to the podium and are passionate, and share their love, and their sense of tough love with the council, is not anger. It just makes the council look really silly, and immature, and stupid, to be mocking and ridiculing citizens when they come up and critique the council, and they sit down, and they can no longer defend themselves. This is not a courtroom, this is not a court of law. People are allowed to chew gum, wear hats, shake their heads side to side, and so forth, and I resent the mayor insisting that citizens not shake their head or do anything that happens to offend her sensibilities.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else who would like to comment on the housekeeping items? All right, seeing no one, I will close public comment, and we'll move on to announcements. City of Cattati has special open office hours on Monday evenings from 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM in the Community Development Department at City Hall as part of its Cattati Open for Business Program. This program provides personalized assistance and information to developers, current Cattati business owners, and those interested in starting a new business within the city. The Rota Park Cattati Regional Library hosts events for all ages, including art exhibits, book clubs, and children's programs. All events are free and open to the public. For more information, call the library at (584) 9121, or visit sonomalibrary.org. The Cattati Historical Society Museum is open regularly, the second Tuesday of each month, from 5:00 to 7:00 PM. Saturdays from 1:00 to 4:00 PM, and by appointment. For more information, call (794) 0304. Citizens interested in receiving City of Cattati community alerts via text or email are encouraged to sign up at nixtel.com. The Cattati City Council invites interested citizens to apply for membership on the Measure G Citizen Oversight Committee. Five seats are up for appointment. Cattati residency is a requirement. This new committee will provide oversight of Measure G sales tax revenues and expenditures. Applications are due by October 15th. Details and applications are available online at cattatacity.org, or contact the city clerk at (665) 3622. Now, our next order of business is one of my favorite, is our honorary mayor, so I will welcome Liam Reynolds of Rancho Cattati High School to the podium.
Hello, I'm Liam, senior at Rancho Cattati High School and ASB president of said high school. I would like to take a minute to tell you about my number one goal in life. My goal is to save a life, or as many lives as I can. That is why, after I graduate, I am proud to say that I will become a United States Marine, an infantryman who hopes to do humanitarian projects. I hope to save countless lives over those next four years. After that, I hope to study biochemical engineering at my dream college, University of California, Berkeley, and hope to study, or at least try to find, a cure for diseases such as cancer and diabetes, and other diseases such as that. I'm very humbled to be named honorary mayor of Cattati for this month, Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and I'm looking forward to speaking upon more specifics of Rancho Cattati High School next meeting. Thank you.
Okay, if you can hang out for just a second, we may have questions for you from the panel here, so I'll start on my left, so Councilmember Landman.
Well, Liam, welcome. Very good to see you. You got my interest right away, talking about being a Marine, very interesting to me. Bob Coleman Singer, who was actually mentioned earlier, I think, in this meeting, was a Marine who served with distinction, something I always enjoyed hearing him talk about, and my older brother also served, and I was curious, what motivated you for the Marines? Because that's a big choice. The Marines always get the tough jobs, and it sounds like you're up for that, so I'd like to hear a little about that.
Well, a lot of my family has been in the military, and including one of my uncles who was a Marine, and I just have felt that was one of the highest branches of the military, and I wanted to do as much as I can to serve my country.
Well, I see the best for last. My grandfather was a Marine over in China, too, so I don't think I measured up to all of them, but I'm pleased to hear what you're doing, so that's very exciting. I look forward to seeing you come back, and thanks for being here to share that with us.
Thank you for having me.
Vice Mayor Moore?
Liam, thanks so much for coming by, I appreciate that. You referenced that you were interested in becoming a Marine, and then going on to Berkeley. Those are commendable goals. I hope that you do well enough. Are you thinking that the GI education will help you at Berkeley?
I think that it will at least help me afford to pay for college, because I know for sciences law, I'll have to go more than four years, and Berkeley, being the best public school in the nation, is fairly expensive, so that will help.
Terrific, I think those are lofty goals. I do have a kind of a homework project for you, if you're up for this. Are you an advocate of the Rota Park Cattati Library?
Not currently.
Okay. There is a teen night going on there tomorrow, because they are dedicating a teen space at the library, and they're inviting as many teens as they can to go there, and they're going to feed them with pizza and all kinds of things, and you can win prizes like mini iPads, et cetera. So if you would kindly get the word out to your colleagues, your fellow students, tomorrow night from 6:00 to 7:30 at the Rota Park Cattati Library, and hopefully we'll see you there.
Since I'm in our leadership class, we have announcements that go over the PA before fourth period, so I'll get some more information on that, and be sure to add that in there.
Perfect, thank you.
Great, all right, I'll go to my other side here, Councilwoman DeLloso.
Well, Liam, yes, very noble goals that you have, I'm very impressed with that. I always like to ask folks that are coming from the ranch, have you, or are you familiar with Project Grad?
Yeah, I've not attended, but I've seen what they've done on campus, and had a lot of seniors from last year tell me about it.
Good, yeah, it's a pretty, it's a pretty fun event, I was involved with it for a few years, so I would encourage you and your friends as graduating seniors to go, you know, it's the one night, certainly where we kind of lock you down, kind of, in the sense that you're there from, I think, 9:30 or 10 o'clock at night until 5:00 the next morning, unless you have a legitimate excuse and a parent comes and picks you up. That's about the only way you can leave before 5:00 AM, but it's a great night, you got, it sounds hokey, but you have all kinds of fun, and you win all kinds of free stuff, stuff that you need, too. Although you're going to the Marines, you might, you might not need a mini fridge, and the Marines, I'm sure they'll take care of you, but there's really a lot of good things that go on that night, and I'd encourage you and your friends to go to that, hopefully it's being offered again. But again, congratulations on your noble goals, and we look forward to seeing you at the next meeting.
Thank you. And for Grad Night, I really like what they do, because it seems fun, and also keeps everyone safe for at least that one night of graduation, which everyone likes to celebrate.
I think it's since 1988, or something like that, in Sonoma County, there's not been a drug or alcohol-related death of a graduating senior since Project Graduation has started going around this county, so it's a wonderful, wonderful event, and thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Councilmember Harvey?
Yes, I was really struck by your comment as to why you wanted to get into the Marines, and that's to save a life. Oftentimes, people that go into the military, that's not really their focus, and so I was really very impressed with that, and I think that that's a good way to look at it, and I think that your serving as the ASB president will also serve you well, because I know in a lot of the military branches, my son was in the military, only in the Navy, they tap into those leadership skills, and even folks that don't think that they have leadership skills, you'll be amazed to see those grow. And again, I really appreciate you thinking of that, and be willing to serve our country, and I wish you really the best. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, you did a great job tonight. I know you were a little bit nervous, but I think you remembered everything you wanted to say, didn't you?
I may have stuttered once or twice, but-
That's okay, it's a little bit nerve-wracking, being in front of all of us with their microphones looking at you, but no, you did a wonderful job, so thanks for being here tonight. I want to echo what my fellow councilmembers were commenting on, it's a really fantastic goals, and it's great to see somebody who's really motivated at such a young age to do so much for other people, so that's wonderful to see. And even though I went to UC Santa Cruz, I think UC Berkeley's a great choice also, I decided to throw that in there. And I wanted to see, is there anybody with you tonight that you wanted to turn the spotlight on for a little bit?
If she'll allow it, I'd like to introduce my mom, Mary Jane Reynolds.
Hello. All right, thank you. And then, the one thing that we would ask if, when you come back to the next meeting, if you wouldn't mind checking in with your classmates and seeing what's something that they feel that Cattati could offer them that it's not right now, so something we could do to improve the city. We've had comments before about, you know, opening a teen center, which we're hopeful to do since we now are posting a job for a recreation department leader, so that would be great if we could get that in place, but if there's anything, any ideas that your friends and classmates may come to you and say, "Oh, could you talk to the council about this one topic that's really interesting to me," or something, then if you could come back at the next meeting, we would really appreciate it.
Along with doing announcements fourth period, every Monday, we go into every class and read it, and I will probably be able to get everyone to ask every class if there's anything they feel Cattati could do, so you get the whole student body's opinion.
So you're already in a great position of power for spreading information and gathering information back, so that's fantastic, we tapped the right guy for this month. So, thank you very much for being here tonight, we look forward to hearing back from you at our next meeting, and have a great two weeks. I'll let you know, too, I know it's a school night, you're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, and you're welcome to go home as soon as you're done, and get focused on homework or whatever else needs to happen tonight, because it sounds like you're a busy guy.
Thank you very much for having me.
All right, have a great night, see you in two weeks.
Awesome.
Okay, so now we have a presentation on the status of the Sustainable Groundwater
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So, this presentation, as you announced, is on the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act, and we're going to start off with what it is, and how it's evolved in terms of progressing towards a groundwater sustainability plan in Sonoma County. And to give you a little bit of background, in 2014, Governor Brown signed three bills into law, collectively known as the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act, and the basic goal of the act is to achieve long-term groundwater sustainability in the state within 20 years, and also to help ensure a reliable water supply for California. It's part of a statewide comprehensive water plan that includes multiple prongs, this, of course, is one of them, water conservation, water recycling, expanded storage, safe drinking water programs, and wetlands and watershed restoration, or other parts of the overall strategy for groundwater sustainability, as well as just generally water supply reliability. And all groundwater basins, as defined by the Department of Water Resources in California, including our own, which is the Santa Rosa Groundwater Plain Basin, must develop a groundwater sustainability plan, which we'll discuss in more detail tonight. As you know, the Santa Rosa Groundwater Plain has, or basin, has had a USGS, a comprehensive USGS study recently completed, which was the cornerstone that we're building on, and in the follow-up to that, we've also had a groundwater management plan created, which, as we move into the Groundwater Management Act in Sonoma County, it actually provides Sonoma County a great leg up, because a lot of the groundwork has been paved already, unlike a lot of groundwater basins in California where they haven't even done a management plan yet. So, a lot of that, a lot of outreach to stakeholders has already taken place, we've, you know, we kind of know what the concerns are in the basin, and the people that care about this issue have been in discussions for several years now already. And finally, I wanted just to introduce to you Jay Jasperz from the Sonoma County Water Agency. He is the Director of Groundwater, and also the Chief Engineer at the Sonoma County Water Agency, and due to the groundwater expertise, the Sonoma County Water Agency is taking the lead on facilitating the process of implementing the Groundwater Management Act in Sonoma County. And so Jay is the technical expert, and I was, I was going to, just as an aside, I was going to print out some slides with notes on it, but he's like, "Don't worry about it." I wake up in the morning, and I've been dreaming about it all night, so he's going to lead off the presentation, and I'll take over towards the end.
Thank you, Damian, and a good evening, Mayor, and city council members, it's a pleasure to be here. As Damian mentioned, I'm going to kind of give you some of the background, general overview of the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act, which is known throughout the state now as SIGMA. It's fairly complicated legislation, it was actually three bills that were mushed into one last year, but I think after tonight, in our conversation presentation, hopefully you'll get the idea that this really is, it's been termed by many throughout the state as the most significant water-related legislation since 1914, 100 years, when in 1914, the surface water rights system was developed. So I'm going to talk to you about, give you the basics on the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act, and some of the early implementation activities that we are working on, the city is a participant in that, and there's 11 agencies that are working on the first steps of implementing SIGMA, and then I'll turn it over to Damian. This is a slide we'd like to show, just to emphasize the connection between groundwater and surface water, and the important role that groundwater plays really in promoting a reliable and resilient regional water supply. These four groundwater basins here in the colors are the four largest of a total of 14 groundwater basins within the state, and these, within the county, I should say, and these four basins, the Alexander Valley, the Santa Rosa Plain, where Cattati is, Sonoma Valley, and Petaluma, are the largest, most heavily-used groundwater basins, and most heavily-populated in the county. The interaction with surface water in the Alexander Valley is apparent because the Russian River system bisects the basin, and then on the other three basins, the outline here is the Sonoma County Water Agency's water transmission system, which provides, as you all know, water supply to the urban areas in those basins, and so there's an interaction between surface water and groundwater supplies, and our overarching goal is to be able to understand both the, both systems, surface water and the Russian River, and groundwater, be able to manage those proactively, so that we can overall better respond in a more resilient manner to the wet years and the dry years that we have in our climate, and so that's our overarching, long-term goal. To do that, the Water Agency started 15 years ago, and was joined by several partners, including the city, in conducting scientific studies in partnership with the US Geological Survey, and we've completed these three studies in Alexander Valley, the Santa Rosa Plain, and the Sonoma Valley, and just last year, we started the final study in the Petaluma Basin, it'll be completed in another two years. In addition to that, we've formed basin advisory panels, stakeholder groups, and have groundwater management programs in the Sonoma Valley and the Santa Rosa Plain, under the pre-existing framework for groundwater management before SIGMA that we're talking about tonight. The prior program, which are still, these plans are still very active in Santa Rosa Plain here and in Sonoma Valley, are based on AB 3030 SB 1938 legislation in the 1990s, but they're voluntary, non-regulatory programs. As you're going to hear tonight, SIGMA is a regulatory program for groundwater management, and the bar is a lot higher in its requirements. and the bar is a lot higher in its requirements. This is just a closer view of the three basins that for Sonoma County, SIGMA applies to. So SIGMA does not apply, it's really important to understand that SIGMA does not apply to all of the county, only groundwater basins identified by the state that the state has ranked medium or high priority. So Sonoma County has three of those basins, and they're the three here, including the Santa Rosa Plain. The other point I'll make, or just point out here is that the act of groundwater management, the voluntary groundwater management programs in the Santa Rosa Plain is the whole watershed, where according to SIGMA, only the state-designated boundaries is where the SIGMA management will cover. And same with the Sonoma Valley, too. So our voluntary program extends to the watershed. SIGMA will cover this more bolder area here in both of those basins. So as I mentioned, SIGMA is a fairly complex legislation. There's many steps along the way and there's trigger levels. And if you fail to meet certain trigger levels, there's what's called the state backstop, which means if the locals cannot perform or fail to perform in any of these key milestones, the state has the ability to come in and take over groundwater management of the basin. So there's certainly a carrot and a stick approach here, encouraging local management, but also with a thread that if you don't perform as locals, the state can come in and take over management. This slide really shows the three major broad steps of SIGMA in terms of implementing it. And step one is where we're at now, forming groundwater sustainability agencies, or GSAs is what they're called. And we have, per the statute, we have an explicit deadline of June 30th, 2017, to form these GSAs. And I'll get into what that is, what they are, and what they can do. The second step is, once you form your GSAs, then for those basins that you're implementing SIGMA, you have until 2022, January 2022, to develop your groundwater sustainability plans. These are medium priority basins, the three basins we have in Sonoma County. So we have till 2022. Other parts of the state that have high priority basins have to have those plans done two years early in 2020. And then the third step, broadly speaking, is once you complete your groundwater sustainability plan and it's approved by the state, then you have 20 years after adoption of the plan to achieve sustainability. And what is sustainability? Well, the statute defines that, and it looks at six major criteria here that you have to have quantitative numerical criteria to meet. Lowering of groundwater levels. If you have lowering of groundwater levels below what is sustainable, and you have to do computer modeling for that, then that is, you do not meet sustainability criteria. So you have to look at certain ranges of water level elevations in the basin. A reduction of groundwater storage, you know, the volume of water in your basin. Seawater intrusion, not really an issue in this basin, but in Petaluma and Sonoma Valley, it is really an issue. Water quality degradation, land subsidence, not anything we've seen here, but in the Central Valley, the ground surface is literally shrinking, you know, and subsiding, you know, a foot or more in some places over the last year and a half or so, causing a lot of damage to infrastructure. And then this is a new one, a very important one, is depletion of surface water. So if by pumping groundwater, you're depleting stream flows, that's another issue where you're not sustainable and you have to set numerical goals. So it's very prescribed and it's much more precise, and the bar's a lot higher than the prior groundwater management programs had to meet. So what are we doing now in the early stages in terms of implementing this? We have a group, and I'll talk about this, there are 11 agencies across those three basins that can participate according to the law in the formation of these GSAs or groundwater sustainability agencies. We've recently hired a facilitator to conduct a stakeholder assessment, and she has gone out to stakeholders, including Damian, I believe you were interviewed for this. And so she has assessed the issues and what the perspectives are from each of the different parties, as well as key stakeholders like agriculture, environmental groups, et cetera, and really tried to frame the issues so that we, as we move through, inform the GSA that we're doing it in a manner that is reflective of the issues out there to the groundwater-using stakeholders by and large. There are basin advisory panels we have in these existing groundwater management programs, and we're working with those advisory panels and those stakeholders to inform them about SIGMA and to make sure that they can provide us, those of us, public agencies that are working on GSA formation, they can provide input to us. We've formed this countywide staff working group of these 11 agencies that I mentioned. We've developed draft principles for GSA governments, which I'll show in a minute. An outreach plan was developed, and that was through a subcommittee of these 11 agencies worked on this. We're working on public workshops in November and December to inform folks about what's coming with the new law and to get input from them on their concerns. So this is the first, you know, this is the principles, a kind of an abbreviated version of the principles all 11 agencies at the staff level agreed to. You know, and these are building upon existing groundwater management programs I was just talking about. Let's keep that energy, let's keep those programs moving forward, and let's merge them into the new SIGMA process. And let's utilize all the work, all the monitoring, all the science that we've done, and really kind of leverage off of that. We want to reinforce local management principles. We don't want to leave this to the state and with a blunt instrument to come in, and they don't know our communities. So we really want to reinforce local management. We want to share our resources to be efficient and most cost-effective and avoid redundancy. We want to share our costs equitably, and we want to represent community stakeholders through these advisory committees once we get these GSAs formed. And conduct a robust and transparent outreach program, which I think our outreach program makes a good effort, our outreach plan makes a good effort at doing. So going back to that three-step slide, as I said, the first step, the first big step is to form these groundwater sustainability agencies by the end of June 2017 and about a year and a half from now. And a GSA can be, per the statute, a local agency or a combination of local agencies can form this GSA, either through an MOA or a joint powers authority, et cetera. A local agency is any public agency that does one of the following: supplies water, manages water, or controls land use. So clearly, the city qualifies as a GSA-eligible agency. If no, within a basin, no GSA entity steps up, then the county is the default GSA. And if the county fails to perform or doesn't step up, then the state will come in and take over management right away. The other thing, there can be more than one GSA in a basin and more than one plan in a basin. If you do that, and there's plenty of places in California and the Central Valley, especially where they're going to be doing that, then you have to have all kinds of agreements and coordination agreements. It gets even more complicated under those circumstances. So these are the GSA-eligible agencies in the three basins. And you can see here in the Santa Rosa Plain, Cotati, Runner Park, Santa Rosa, Sebastopol, Windsor, Sonoma County, and the Sonoma County Water Agency. And then in the other basins, you can see the other folks. The county and the Sonoma County Water Agency in all three basins. So I think this is my last slide before I turn it over to Mr. Obid. I want to just point out that there's, what do these GSAs, what can they do? They do have fairly significant authorities under the law, but these are discretionary authorities. And so some of the things that they have authority to do is to conduct studies, register and monitor groundwater wells. They can set well spacing requirements, they can require reporting of pumping rates, monitoring and reporting. They can regulate groundwater pumping. That's a big one. They can implement capital projects, they can acquire real estate, they can build projects, operate projects, and they can assess fees to cover their costs for projects or for administering monitoring or administering the costs of the GSA in general. So they have fairly significant authorities. Again, these are discretionary. But if a GSA, if a basin does not meet its sustainability numerical goals and it does not exercise these authorities, then the state will come in again. And they've made it pretty clear that their approach will be more expensive than the locals and it will rely on one thing, and that's just cutting pumping to get sustainability. So they're not too interested in building, you know, recharge projects or recycled water projects. And so they've, they've been very clear from the outset that, you know, kind of as the bad cop hanging out there in Sacramento to encourage locals to get together and work locally. So with that, I think I'll turn it over to Mr. Obid.
Thank you, Jay. So Jay, he touched on this a little bit, but these are some possible groundwater sustainability agency governance options. It really runs the gamut. You can have one agency with one plan for each one of the basins in Sonoma County, or you could have just one countywide GSA with one countywide plan, or you can have multiple GSAs within the basin, or any combination of those. So as you can imagine, each one of those has its some pluses and minuses, and that's where we are right now in terms of talking through some options, and we'll talk about where we are right now in terms of, at a staff level, discussing this. This is the proposed skeletal structure, what's been referred to as a proposed skeletal structure. And this is what, this is what we've been talking about as a preferred approach right now. And so each one of these blue circles represents a basin, Petaluma Valley, the Santa Rosa Plain, and the Sonoma Valley. And so each one would have its own groundwater sustainability agency and its own groundwater sustainability plan. And there's another wrinkle to this that I'll get to in a minute, but one of the main reasons of all the different types of structures that you could have, that this has fallen out as the preferred approach, actually independently in each one of these three different basins, was that in Sonoma Valley, for example, you don't really want to be sitting on a committee with a bunch of people from the Santa Rosa Plain talking about Santa Rosa Plain issues when they don't really affect you and vice versa. So again, this, this keeps the administration more focused on the groundwater basin that's relevant to it, and it also keeps the plan and anything that comes out of it. You saw on an earlier slide that one of the potential authorities that could be exercised is the ability to create projects and that sort of thing. So this, this also keeps it focused within the basin that you exist in. So this is the wrinkle I referred to. Whenever you have three different agencies that are operating geographically near each other, but with distinct groundwater basins, there's definitely an opportunity for efficiencies in terms of general administration, and there's definitely going to be some need for coordination among them. And the coordination, as you can imagine, would cover all sorts of activities from managing data to making sure your basin boundaries, where they're coterminous, are managed between basins, funding requests, impacts that affect adjacent basins, communications with state or federal agencies, projects across basin boundaries, regulation development, public outreach and stakeholder engagement, monitoring protocols, well permits, contracts with facilitators. I mean, it goes, it goes on and on. There's a lot of reasons why it would make sense to have coordination between the basins. And the presentation that we're doing tonight, that's us, October 13th, there's been a couple presentations to date, this presentation we're having tonight, Sebastopol had it, and Valley of the Moon Water District, the Water Agency Board of Directors had it today earlier, and Runner Park is having it at the same time as us, and then the other agencies are having it later in the month. And Petaluma is the last in the group, November 2nd. So the next steps include outreach during the fall, generally speaking, finalizing the basin boundaries that'll happen at near the end of the year. And then we're going to just step through the, step through these processes that you see on the screen as we move into hitting that first deadline in June 2017. And I mentioned earlier that we, in the Santa Rosa Plain, we already have a groundwater management plan, so we're already quite a bit ahead of a lot of communities in the state in the sense that a lot of the outreach to stakeholders has been done, is just that voluntary groundwater management planning process. But as part of the GSA process, we're continuing, will be continuing this outreach through the various stakeholders that you see on the screen there. There is a, there's a draft outreach plan that we'll be bringing forward in a little bit, and I'll talk about that in a moment. There's going to be a public workshop, December 9th, at the Findlay Community Center from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. for this groundwater basin, the one we're in. And so tonight, you are receiving the presentations to kind of get the basics of what SIGMA is and where we are in the process. And also to solicit any feedback that you have on that. There's a slide earlier on the principles, the general principles that are guiding the process, and the skeletal structure that we talked about with the blue circles and how the basins themselves would be governed. There's a lot more detail that we, that we'll, that we'll get to later in the process where we start talking about, when we get beyond the conceptual structure that we're talking about tonight and we get into the actual, the details of the legal structure, what that means. Is it a district? Is it a JPA? Is it a MOU? Is it, you know, again, there's pros and cons to each one of those types of legal mechanisms, but that's a discussion for a later date. Right now, we're just trying to focus on, conceptually, looking for feedback on if anything jumps out or you have questions on. And after tonight, we'll, we'll take, we'll take feedback from the council and the public, and we'll come back at a future meeting to get formal action on the outreach plan and the, the principles and also the skeletal structure, just to formalize that, what we're just talking about informally tonight. So with that, myself or Jay would be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you both for that presentation. This was actually something that came up at the San Jose annual conference that I attended, so I'm glad to see that you guys are already on top of the issue and addressing it, and that we're so far ahead of the game in the Santa Rosa Plain. So I will bring it back to council if there are any questions or comments at this point, and then after that, I'll open it for public comment. Yes, Councilmember Delloso?
Great, thank you very much, and thanks both for the presentation. Is there a baseline year for groundwater measurement in either the Santa Rosa Plain and/or anywhere else in the county?
Yes, the baseline has to be no later than January 1st of 2015, when the legislation came in. But the local jurisdictions can slide that baseline earlier in time or more in the distant past if you want, but it at least has to be, say, for water levels what they were this past January 1st.
Yeah, because it seems like, you know, if you do go back a little further in time, that could be somewhat deceiving. Okay, so we've had roughly four years of a drought, quote unquote. Not only that, but water use has changed, certainly over the last 15 or 20 years countywide. And there's more vineyards that are maybe potentially using water more so than we may have used it for agricultural uses prior. So I'm just a little concerned about, you know, what kind of flexibility is in there and if it's really going to be equitable.
So yeah, it does allow for having a, maybe a minimum and a working baseline to, say, to allow for the drought, you know, and wet years, too. So certain basins are managed that way down in south, so they have to have that anyway. But you have to justify it and have numerical standards for that.
Okay. Yeah, just one other question, and I have a number of comments that can wait, but my other question, I guess, relates back to governance. So we are being asked for some direction on governance and what are the options available here? Is that one of the things we're being asked for tonight?
Yeah, so we've come to a proposed governance structure, and so we're just presenting it to you tonight to provide feedback, if you have any, on the proposed skeletal structure that you saw.
And yes, I do, but I will wait for public comment. Thanks.
All right. Yes, Councilmember Harvey.
So as I understood what you said, the reason for going to the three basins versus one centralized had to do with the issues in the different ones, is that the only reason? Because what strikes me is in the presentation, it said that one of the sustainability items has to do with drawing down of surface water, and we all share the same surface water. So there's going to be a little bit of a balance there because we all have surface water as well as groundwater, and different cities kind of balance that a little bit differently. And the ranges, you well know, are all over the board on that, so.
The surface water drawdowns are mostly, Jake can chime in if I misstate this, but I believe it's all within the basin. So for example, if we have creeks within the basins that are suddenly dry throughout the year when they never were before, that could be a symptom of overpumping, not necessarily across basin surface water issue, like our regional supply from the Russian River.
So it doesn't really address if we end up affecting the Russian River and the Russian River, you know, God forbid, becomes dry because we've, you know, sucked too much out of there? How does that get addressed?
Well, it's, so the, and I believe the DWR basin that we saw the map of is the limits of the regulatory authority of the groundwater agency. And the actual, like the Russian River, for example, is managed under separate water rights permits, and it's not, my understanding is it's not part of the DWR watershed basin, so it wouldn't be regulated. It's regulated in a lot of different ways, but not regulated under the Sigma regime.
So that's not something that we would have to address, which would also be a reason not to have one centralized one, because we all get our water, a lot of our water from the Russian River, but if it's excluded or regulated differently, then we wouldn't have to have that coordination between the different basins?
Yeah, so maybe under Sigma, I mean, there's a lot of coordination that occurs between the different basins already, just as, just due to the reality that we're supplied by the same regional water system. So the regional water system is, like I said, regulated under its own water right permits and numerous other mechanisms. And I think the main interplay would be that if people are overpumping their local groundwater basin and they have alternate sources of water, you know, you could potentially see a shift to more regional water and less local pumping to maintain that sustainable level within the basins. But even if that were the case, the regional system is still managed under its own regulatory regime, so you can't just pump that down, you know, if you understand what I mean.
Yeah, I just wanted to be sure of the inner relationship and how, you know, because that was another reason that it made sense. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Lehman, did you have any questions or comments at this point?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, just a couple of questions. I'll have some comments on, and we'll answer some of the questions about organization later, I think, after public comment too, but two quick questions. One, I'm looking at the timeline on this, and this could be for Mr. Jasper's or Mr. Obit, whoever wants to take a swing at either of these. That's a long time. We're looking at a plan by 2022, maybe, I understand, and then 20 years after that, that gets us to 2042. Looking at the issue, that's a bit down the road. So I guess my question would be, what can Sonoma County do to beat that timeline? What would be involved with that? Obviously, some political will certainly would be necessary, but I'd be curious, what are our options there? Because it seems like, I can understand the reasoning as why this might be there, but it seems problematically long.
Okay, I'll just start off and then let Jay take the rest of the question. But I will say that those are the state required timelines, and I think that probably the most challenging part for us locally is figuring out what that GSA structure is and how it's regulated legally. In terms of the actual sustainability plan, there's a groundwater management plan already that we've created, and so I think this sustainability plan would largely build off of that. So I wouldn't expect that we'd need until 2022 to do that part of it, but.
Yeah, I think his last words, careful.
The legislation, the timelines are meant to be limits, time limits, really, and locals are encouraged to do it in a shorter period of time, and I think that, as we've talked about, that we've, we're a few steps ahead in some ways, so it's quite conceivable if there's the will to get the GSP done earlier. And then the plan itself will be able to lay out with five-year milestones when sustainability's achieved. You have to have it within 20 years of the plan adoption, but there's, you're encouraged to do it sooner than that if you realistically can. And so the reason why those time limits are on there, really through, this is statewide law, and really, it's not being driven by what's going on in Sonoma County, it's the Central Valley. And if you look at some of the areas in San Joaquin and Tulare Basins there, where, I mean, it's just incredibly grim down there in terms of the overdraft. Some of my colleagues down there who manage irrigation districts don't think they're going to make it, or don't believe that they're going to make it in those time periods. It's just such a big deal, so.
This is good to hear, because that was what I think was on everybody's mind here, is that question, and it seems like a current problem, and it's something, and obviously you have a lot of strings to pull together to make this work. So it sounds like we're in good position. Basically, we have to find a way to agree on an organization that we think can work, and we have to try and get stakeholders, important stakeholders, to agree to that, but other than that, we're set to do much better than that. One last question, and this is just a general thing, I don't need to put you on record, but just in general terms, I remember hearing in the USGS report in Roner Park, I believe it was last year or perhaps just a little longer ago than that, where they essentially stated that the Santa Rosa Plain was already slightly in overdraft, even at this point in time, which was kind of a surprise to me, because I, after the court ordered changes some years back, I thought in the changes in the pumping in the eastern part of the plain, I thought we got past that. Where is the general sense, and I know that's a hard thing to pin down, but just shooting from the cuff here, where are we at in terms of our groundwater right now?
So I don't believe they characterize it as overdraft, use the overdraft word. What the report says is that over, I think, 25 years, the storage of groundwater in the basin has declined on average about 3,000 acre feet a year. And this is, you know, a basin that has hundreds and hundreds of thousands of acre feet, so it's not like it's a 10,000-foot, you know, acre foot basin. So there's been very slight reductions over the last 10 years or so. Earlier, as I think you all know, in this part of the basin, this is the Catati sub-basin in this area, there were significant drawdowns in groundwater. This management of surface water and groundwater really plays a key role. It's a perfect example right here. Russian River water is brought onto the city in Roner Park, and what happened was the groundwater levels just responded, and they're almost fully recovered from where they were, you know, in the 1980s and mid-1990s. So that's almost recovered. So compared to Sonoma Valley, where there are some fairly significant decreases in water level, there are some areas that are dropping four feet a year down there, and they're over 100 feet below sea level. Not the case here anymore. The situation that the USGS reports concludes, though, is that what you're seeing is a decrease in stream flows in this basin. As you pump groundwater, it induces more stream flow, and you lose, that's where your first line of defense is, and that's helping make up and keep the groundwater fairly stable right now. But it's a much better condition than it was just 15 years ago, for sure.
Yeah, I had the sense that. And the term overdraft definitely was used, but I think the description was generally very slightly, and isn't something to, isn't going to hit us right now, but long-term, it wasn't, in the long run, the sustainable way to go. So that's helpful to hear, and it's very interesting to hear about, that the surface water actually is the first thing we see hit, because that's something most people would, probably wouldn't be clear of. So it's good to hear that we're in better sense than everybody else, and this gives us some time perhaps to prepare and try to avoid wind up being in the same situation, I hope. Thank you.
The state, I just identified last month, the basins in overdraft, because it has a legal meaning, and none of our Sonoma County basins were identified by the state, so we...
It sounds like we don't want to be, so I'm glad to hear that, too.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor Moore.
Thank you very much, Jay and Damian, for that. When you look at the outreach and all the different stakeholders that are part of this, one of them that really jumps out to me is the tribes, and whether they are going to be held to this regulation, or if they are going to be exempt from that regulation. Do we know that yet? I think of a local tribe specifically that may put in 200-room hotel, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah, there's two tribes that have, there's tribal land in the Santa Rosa Plain, Litton and Grayton. Grayton has been participating in our voluntary program over the last several years. But what the statute, Sigma, how it addresses tribal interests is that they're exempt from Sigma, because it's state law versus tribal law, but, and they cannot participate as a member of a GSA. But once the GSAs are formed and a plan is developed by the GSA, the tribes can participate in implementing that groundwater sustainability plan at their discretion. We are having conversations with both of those entities, initial conversations, you know, so, and we'll see how it plays out over the next couple of years.
All right, thank you. So at this point, I'll open it up to public comment, and then we'll bring it back to the council. So I don't have any speaker cards on this issue, it's nothing we're voting on, but if there's anybody who'd like to make public comment about the two questions, feel free. Yes, Mr. Hancock.
Yes, good evening, Councilman Neil Hancock. Very nice to hear this presentation and to get the overview of it. I guess the questions have been good on the implementation. The one thing that might apply for us that could also be very visible is, when would this model be developed of what's going on with the groundwater and where are those recharge areas? So as we know, the water does fall from the sky, I think that's in this area, 100% of the water that's going to come into the ground is, and I stand corrected if I've missed something on that, which will fall into the streams, and then it needs to recharge in some way. But the more we can understand what that model is, and it's a very difficult situation understanding how water moves underground, but it would be good to have a timeline. Is there a timeline for when that model would be evolved? Thank you very much.
Thank you. And is there any others who would like to make public comment at this time? All right, seeing known, I will close public comment and bring it back to the council. And it sounds like the two main areas were the general skeletal structure and then also the goals or the...
The principles.
Principles, thank you. So bring it back to council. Yes, Councilmember Delloso.
Happy to go. I want to talk a little bit about the governance options that were there, and I think from what I was hearing from Councilmember Harvey, I think I'm disagreeing with it, but I may have misheard you wrong, but if not, I'm still disagreeing with it. And that is, I think the one GSA per basin, at least at first glance, makes more sense to me. I think there's so many variables in the different basins from, I mean, I just wrote a couple down, soil types, ag uses, and they're all critical, and all the basins are going to have to coordinate at some level. I totally get that, but I just, I'm not clear that a countywide plan makes sense. I can see some streamlining of administrative services and things like that, but, you know, we have other examples of programs like this in the county where it's not necessarily just one group making these kinds of decisions. And I'm not saying it can't be done, I'm sure it can, but I don't know, at first glance, to me, it just seems like, we're only talking three basins here, and it doesn't seem too overwhelming to, and in fact, the fact that Santa Rosa Plain, where we are, has a plan already in place, there's no reason why Petaluma and Sonoma can't use that as a template, and so, you know, there's a lot of maybe groundwork that's already been done. I don't know, I just, I'm not convinced from the information I've seen or heard so far that a countywide plan would be best. I get the efficiencies, that part of it makes sense, but I'm not getting that there's a lot to do, sort of from an administrative standpoint. And I don't know if it's too early in the process to really even comment on that, but I'd be happy to hear it.
Well, I mean, there are some efficiencies in the sense that you only have one group doing everything, but there's also inherent inefficiencies as well, because you have, like you touched on, a good example would be in the Sonoma Valley groundwater basin, one of the issues they're dealing with there is salient intrusion on the southern end of that groundwater basin. And that's an issue that we don't have at all in the Santa Rosa groundwater plain. And so there'd be, there's a lot of, there's going to be a lot of effort and resources dedicated to that, and it really would be, in the Santa Rosa Plain, it would be irrelevant to us. So if it was just one basin, we'd all be kind of in that same discussion, and aside from it not really being relevant to our groundwater basin, it also could put the Sonoma Valley basin people in a position where people from Santa Rosa or Petaluma are making decisions about stuff that they're doing in their basin, or vice versa, so.
Yeah, and I'm not trying to say that we need to build these walls and have these three separate entities, you know, because, I don't know, there's efficiencies and inefficiencies in these options here. And, you know, if sort of the overriding differential might be something like saltwater intrusion, would it make more sense for Sonoma and Petaluma to have sort of one unit, one joint plan, and then the Santa Rosa Plain, something separate? Everywhere, every turn I take, every idea I have, I keep blowing out of the water. It's like, no, that doesn't make any sense either, so. So if you're looking for a recommendation from me, I guess I don't have one, but I think, at first, I think what I'm saying is that a countywide plan, just to me, doesn't make as much sense, and I'm concerned just because of things like, you know, saltwater intrusion, soil types, you know, you've got different soil types all over the county, different ag uses, there's so many issues there. And what are, what are some of the existing locations where groundwater recharge, for example, would be a really good location, and where are those? And I don't know if those have been identified at any level at this point in time. So those are just some of my concerns. I could, you know, kind of let the other four maybe give direction on that, but I'm having a little problem coming up with a good one. Okay, a couple other points. Already asked that, yeah, already, the county is not so big, I'm pretty sure we could do this coordination thing, but, yeah, that's it. Thank you. Did I say anything in the last five minutes that made sense? Probably not, but I feel better about it.
All right.
I'm done.
Okay, fantastic. Councilmember Harvey?
Yeah, I wasn't suggesting the centralized model. I just was asking, no, no, I was just asking if the issues was the only thing that was keeping us from going in that direction. And there's, as you pointed out, a lot of other reasons that we would or wouldn't do it. I was just trying to understand why we would want to go in that, and if it was, that there were separate issues, is that overcomeable or not? So I wasn't suggesting that, just to be clear.
You know, one more thing I'll just throw out there, we didn't really talk about it, but one of the options is the no option option, which basically means you don't do anything, and you basically are governed by whoever forms the GSA and covers you, which means you would have no role in it, other than you'd show up at public meetings and comment on stuff, but you'd have no role in the decision-making. So it's that, I mean, that, I didn't throw it out there, because that wasn't really an option, that seemed very palatable to any of the eligible entities that you saw on the screen, but it is a... very palatable to any of the eligible entities that you saw on the screen. But it is a potential option. I'll just throw it there, so you're aware of it.
So I will go out there. I mean, I do like the idea of the models with one in each basin, because they do have different issues that need to be addressed. It makes a lot of sense to me to do it that way. I think we will have to figure out a good way to coordinate that. I'm sure that one of the, one of the good things about having Sonoma County and the Water Agency in all three of them is that maybe that insight into what's going on in the other ones could be shared such that, you know, everybody was on the same page. I would hope that that would happen. And maybe that's a good way of being efficient in sharing what's going on. But, yeah, I agree with the proposed skeleton structure.
All right, no longer this way, then. Councilmember Lemon?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So in general, principles seem good to me. Certainly reinforcing local management principles in Sigma. I think that'll be important. When you compare it to what the other option is, the state coming in with a relatively heavy hand and getting the result they want, but I think we'd be happy if we rolled up our sleeves and did the work ourselves. So that's definitely, it sounds good to me. I don't need to comment more on those. Structure's interesting. Yeah, this is interesting. This is one of those things, it's not driven by political boundaries or the typical geographical boundaries we think about counties, cities. This is driven by watersheds, aquifers, kind of more truly water-based boundaries. So with that, it does seem logical to have the three basins. The problematic thing, or where it gets not even problematic, just slightly more difficult, the Petaluma Valley basin, Sonoma Valley basin, pretty clear, pretty easy. The Santa Rosa basin has slightly more challenges to it because you have five cities involved beyond just the county and the Water Agency, and they're all somewhat disparate in groundwater resources, how they approach their water system, and very disparate in their sizes and needs. So obviously, that makes it more challenging to find a structure that works, although I think it's doable. I like the idea of, I do support the three separate basins. I could see cost sharing potentially in a shared TAC or something like that. And gosh, I notice the agency runs through all three of those basins and certainly has that background. So there's some logic that can work with that. I would be careful in working that through that it does respect those local management principles, because that's the one place you want to be careful to make sure, if you're sharing something, it doesn't wind up pushing in one direction or another. And that's, that's a challenge, but I think it'll be necessary to do. So we talked about that, the three basins, resource sharing. I'll toss it out. As you look at with these five cities and something, that almost calls for a JPA maybe. And I'm seeing some...
I was waiting for those initials to be...
As a system, we, I believe, we may have had some problems with it recently. But then again, it's worked very well in other situations, too. Sonoma Clean Power certainly has even more players and just as many different interest groups. Because that's the thing about this, there's going to be a lot of outside interest groups, and stakeholders are going to have a lot of interest in this and be very involved in the process. And that particular structure has worked so far, at least there, so maybe it works here. So I'm tossing that out as it seems like an obvious thing. But I think the direction so far seems good. And the few challenges I can point out, I think there are ones, we've beat them before, not every single time, but we have beat them a few times. So there's no reason for this really most important of issues that we can't. So, thank you.
Okay, Vice Mayor Moore?
Well, on the surface, I think that the three basins make more sense. Once you get into the weeds and you start talking about governance, if the three basins are formed, the county then forms their own for all the other areas within the county. Is that correct?
So the Sigma, the state law, requires that the groundwater sustainability agencies and the plans that they create are on the, on the watersheds, or I'm sorry, the groundwater basins that are significant to the Department of Water Resources. So the map of the different water, water basins, groundwater basins that you saw, those are the, those are the basins that the Department of Water Resources, therefore the state, expects a GSA and GSP to be implemented in. So when you're talking about like West County and those areas where there's no significant groundwater basin, those wouldn't fall under this law.
Okay. So when you talk about governance, and then if you look at, dare I say, at a JPA, and then try to determine what that might look like and who might have particular votes, you may not have the issues in some of the other JPAs because the county is not going to need representation for some of those other areas that don't have those basins, so to speak. So I don't know that the structure of the JPAs there with the county and some of the other cities would be as much of a concern as it has been in some of the other issues. So I would probably be more supportive of that type of an issue. And I think the three makes more sense.
Okay, thank you. So I also agree with the principles as they were outlined. And then I also think it would be good to do the three separate organizations. And I like the idea that Councilmember Harvey mentioned, if we had the members from the county as well as the Water Agency act in sort of a liaison capacity where they're sharing information that were of concern in the other basins, I think that would be a great information conduit to set up so that we're making sure we're addressing everybody's concerns, but also being able to focus on our own within the groundwater basin that we're located in. So do you feel like you've gotten plenty of feedback from the council and direct, oh, sorry, yes, Vice Mayor?
Yes, Kevin, I did have one more question if I may add, sir, Steph. Do we have an idea of what the, where the funding is going to come for this? Yeah?
So right now, the facilitation services that are managing this process to get it up and running are, are being funded by DWR. The Water Agency applied for and got a grant through DWR.
For those that don't know, Department of Water Resources...
Department of Water Resources, sorry. Yeah. So there, that's the, that's sort of getting the, getting the plans and getting everyone aligned in a direction. Once it actually, once something actually gets off the ground and starts running, then immediately, well, preceding that actually happening, there's going to have to be a discussion in the basins, assuming we move forward on the skeletal structure that we talked about within the Santa Rosa Plain, there would have to be a discussion between all the various GSA-eligible entities about how that's going to be funded and, you know, what the cost share is going to be and so forth. And it's really going to depend on what kind of structure gets put in place and what kind of programs are implemented initially. You saw on one of the slides all the different authorities that the GSA could have. So they wouldn't, any GSA, depending on the local circumstances, wouldn't necessarily implement all of those authorities. But you could implement some of those authorities, whatever you feel that you need as a basin in your GSP and your, in your plan, to achieve groundwater sustainability within the time horizon that you set. So, so I guess that's a long way of saying it depends on what kind of programs you're implementing to achieve sustainability that's going to drive the cost. But there will have to be a discussion, a general discussion about how this agency is going to run and who's going to pay for it and how much. Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mr. Jasper, for your time here today and helping clarify these issues. And hopefully, we've provided some good direction. And thank you for the initial presentation. And I know that'll be followed up later on down the line as we achieve each step along the way. So thank you very much. So we'll move on to approval of the final agenda. Are there any changes that we need to make to the agenda tonight?
There are no changes.
Okay. Was that about the agenda? Okay.
I wanted to request that you had at least a discussion about the abatement at 601 West Gold Street because the previous owners no longer own the property. It was sold in the trustee sale on October 2nd. And the Bank of New York Mellon owns it. And there's a question of timing that is going to take at least, there's been nothing done. And it'll at least take 10 days to get a J permit for the demolition. And then we have 10 days of being notified, the neighbors and stuff. So we're, and the rainy season's coming and it's going to cause a whole lot of mess. So I was hoping that could be added, at least a discussion about. And I think it would be, because of how it was written, the resolution that it probably is invalid now that, because that time was given. In the resolution, it said that was, the extension was given to, so that the, the Stanleys could have the time to find the financing and all that while they don't have to worry because now the bank owns it. So I want to take that.
And unfortunately, we're not able to add things to the agenda just because there's no notice for anybody who's interested in being here for that discussion. But I did speak to one of the attorneys, and they were planning on being here at the next meeting to give us an update. So we'll be able to address it at that point. But thank you. So now we'll move on to citizens' business. Any member of the public wishing to speak to the council on any items listed on the consent calendar or any matters not listed on the agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda during this period. Comments of any member of the public are normally restricted to a total of three minutes in length per person for matters not on the agenda and a total of three minutes per person in length for items on the consent calendar. So I don't have any cards for citizens' business right now. Do I have anybody who would like to make public comment at this time? Yes, Ms. Alderman?
What I just mentioned, that this was sold in, this property was sold in foreclosure. And so they don't have any, the abatement costs will be passed on to the, to the bank of the new owners, the Bank of New Mellon. And so, New York Mellon. And the, there's a couple of problems. The ruins, the foundation ruins are open, and small animals can get in there. If the rains start, they'll, it'll be like a swimming pool under there. So I'm requesting that there's something be done that, so like my, we all know I lost a cat because of poisoning due to this. I may lose another cat if my cat's getting out and there's going to be another, and I shouldn't have to worry that my cat's going to get poisoned every time it gets out. And there's chemicals, we know there's chemicals on this property. We had the testament sediment tested. It was high in three chemicals and two metals. And it's just going to do more damage to that property. It's going to do damage to our property. It needs to be dealt with as soon as possible. You guys just need to, somebody needs to abate this property, work it out in court, decide who is going to pay for it later. But when the rainy season comes, it's going to just make life worse. It's going to make it more expensive to abate. We've waited 16, almost 16 months now for this property to be abated. I mean, that's longer than anybody was. And I don't even know if you guys have jurisdiction anymore because the governor's office through the Department of Toxic Control gave it to the Sonoma County offices. The, and nothing's been done in that area. You guys, because you didn't do the building codes, a single building code you didn't enforce. And so you need to enforce some of them, including making sure that those, that that foundation ruin is safe, that there, a small child could go in there. There are openings like this big into the foundation ruins. And I'm just tired of having such a public risk next to my, next to me. Okay. I just would like it dealt with as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Berch?
Madam Mayor, at the last city council meeting, I requested from the city clerk an electronic hearing device for her to follow along on these meetings. And I brought it to the city's attention that it did not work. And I wanted the chair of the meeting to hear it for herself. I brought the hearing device up to the podium, up to the dais. I set it on the top of the dais. I turned around and while the mayor had some little temper tantrum, she pushed it onto the floor where Mark Landman ridiculed me for dropping the hearing device. And that's clearly not the case. If you go back and review the video, you can see it for yourself. And the mayor actually apologized. She said, sorry, but she pushed it off. Now, Mr. Landman, people make mistakes. I understand that you made a mistake here, and you owe me an apology. And you can add that apology to the other apologies that you owe me. But that was very short-sighted on your part. Now, look, last month, we discussed, the council discussed, a new possible countywide program to handle the excessive medication that needed to be disposed of in our communities. And Mr. Landman said, well, it's not going to cost, it's not going to cost us anything. Now, does anybody really believe in this day and age that such a program is not going to cost anything? That is absolutely absurd. Let's take a little walk down memory lane here regarding the council members here. Mr. Deloso and Mr. Moore and Mr. Landman were all appointed to the city council for kissing up to the other council members on the council and kissing up to Prue Draper. That's how you got appointed to your seats.
I'm not sure that that's considered under our subject matter jurisdiction.
Madam, you're interrupting me. This is citizens' business. I can talk about anything.
And it needs to be...
You owe me an apology, too, ma'am. Okay? Do not interrupt me again.
Oh, all right.
Thank you. Please, and add the time to my, to the clock. Okay?
Must be the...
You have used the city council's offices and the city manager's offices for your reelection campaigns. Okay, that's how you got reelected. You got elected. I was elected, on the other hand, by the people of this town for standing up to the runaway spending of City Hall, a city hall that does not respect diversity of opinions, and others in the room that vote, sometimes vote against higher taxes and higher salaries for city employees. My job as a city leader is to help turn the sinking ship called Katati around. That was my promise to my supporters who continue to vote for me election after election, because they want their town back. People will ask me sometimes, they go, why do you even bother with these idiots, George? Why? And I say, because it's the right thing to do. The council needs voices of common sense and reason in the community, and that's our duty to provide it. Here is the broken hearing device for tonight.
As I asked last time...
I'm going to bring it to you, ma'am.
Return it to the city clerk. Mr. Berch, I asked you to, no, thank you. Have a seat, Mr. Berch, and thank you for yet again not interrupting or disrupting our meetings. I appreciate that. Have a seat. Is there anybody else who would like to address the council under citizens' business? All right, seeing that, I will close citizens' business. And we'll move on to the next topic, which is...
Madam Mayor, if I might very quickly.
Yes, of course.
Not a new, not a new agenda item for the future, but I just want to correct the record. I did not ridicule anybody. You may wish to recheck that tape. I do remember that falling off. I'm not sure who knocked it off. I don't remember any temper tantrums, at least from this side of the dais. But I know I certainly didn't ridicule anybody. So that's incorrect.
All right, thank you. So are there any directions on future agenda items that anybody would like to mention?
Yes.
Yes, Councilwoman Deloso.
One is, I was curious on the progress on discussing the smoking ordinance with the business entities. And just to get a follow-up on that, because it's really not, it's certainly not addressed in the upcoming consent calendar. So I just, I didn't, you know, at some point in the near future, if we could get some kind of an update on that, whenever that's appropriate. And I think it would be really beneficial for everybody, too, if, I don't know if it's maybe at the next council meeting, but maybe, and maybe it's under the city manager's report, but to get some update on that, the abatement, the abatement property, if you will, that Ms. Alderman has brought up multiple times, just to get some kind of an update of where we are on that. I know you had mentioned something, Mayor, on that, which I hadn't heard. So that was some new news as well. But just, just to kind of keep us up to date on what's going on with that property. Thanks. Thanks.
Charlie, did you want to address that?
Yes, just real briefly, I can update you on both of those. So the attorney that was here representing the Stanleys, as well as the Stanleys, have been notified that we're scheduling an update as the council requested for the next meeting, the 27th. So as we mentioned, during the public hearing on that item, they're not obligated to show up for that. Whether they choose to show up or not, we don't know what they will choose, but we will certainly update the council and the public on what we know and what we expect moving forward toward that hard date that is November, that is in late November. And as far as the smoking ordinance, we have had a second follow up meeting with the bar owners. And during that meeting, we decided to, we were specifically talking about the outdoor dining piece of the smoking ordinance. And we decided to invite the restaurant owners in that same two block stretch so that they could also weigh in on the outdoor dining piece. So we may get that all done and back in time for the 27th. If not, it would be the first meeting in November.
All right, thank you very much.
Yes, Vice President Moore.
If I may comment on that meeting with the merchants and the planning department regarding the follow up to the smoking, they indicated that that meeting was much more friendly and much more positive going forward. So I thought I'd pass along those kudos.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Yes, Councilmember Lehman.
And thank you for one last point. I should have mentioned this earlier, but I do agree, the concern about the hearing devices, I recognize we just have these, there's a trial period certainly. Things can break even when they're brand new. I think we've all seen that. And depending on the level of hearing disability, they may not be completely adequate for everybody. But I would like to see, if possible, if we could find the budget, let's buy a few extra. So we have just a few in the background, so in case if we have a problem, we have a few to try and make sure we can serve everybody as equally as possible. I think that might be valuable. It's interesting now, we're having much more of a call with these than we've had for the last six years that I've been here, but I think this is a good thing and I think there's no reason we can't get a little more depth there. So hopefully, we can make sure everybody's, gets the full benefit of listening to all of us.
Yeah, I can add that they're already on order.
Thank you very much.
Okay, is there anything else that you want to add? Okay, terrific. So we'll move on from the direction on future agenda items and we'll go to the consent calendar. Now, I do have a speaker card for item number three, so I'd like to open public comment and to invite Christina Saylor.
Hello.
Hi, thank you.
Hi. I'm a resident of Ronert Park in Katati and I'm a student at Sonoma State living in multi-unit housing. Currently, our homeowners association has a non-smoking policy, but the policy is essentially ineffective. I could complain to my landlord, but realistically, there isn't much the homeowners association can do to enforce these policies. I'm a mother to a beautiful two-year-old named Parker, and even though I quit smoking years ago, Parker's still subjected to secondhand smoke. Our neighbors smoke freely on their back porches and in the front of their condos and just walking down to the, to our apartment after school can be challenging. The American Lung Association states that secondhand smoke exposure poses serious health threats to children and adults. Secondhand smoke doesn't just pose a health risk for those in its immediate vicinity, it can migrate from other units and common areas, travel through doorways, cracks in walls, electrical outlets, et cetera. It isn't unusual to smell tobacco smoke in our apartment, although there are no smokers in our home. Where can a family with a young child living in multi-unit housing escape the harmful effects of secondhand smoke? Please recognize that a multi-unit housing smoking ordinance is essential to the health of our community and especially to our younger generation who are being subjected to secondhand smoke and what should be their safest place, their home. Thank you.
Thank you. And since I've opened it up, does anybody else have comments on items three and four on the consent calendar? All right, seeing then, I'll close public comment and bring it back to the council.
Well, I move to approve items three and four on the consent calendar.
Second. All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? May the record reflect that's a five oh vote in support of passing the two consent calendar items. Thank you. Now we'll move on to public hearing, which is the adoption of the updated traffic impact fee. And for that, I believe we're turning back to our city manager, Damian Obed.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So a, a common, or I should say, the most common way to mitigate, in California, to mitigate traffic impacts due to development is a mechanism called the traffic impact fee. And this was authorized in the late eighties by the state. And it's a, it's a series of, it's basically a series of laws that followed Prop 13 that basically makes the, as Prop 13 intended, makes the people that cause the impacts pay for the impacts. So the traffic impact fee would be applicable to new development. And it basically, what, the one that you have before you tonight is based on the general plan build out. So the general plan build out creates a variety of projects, the traffic impact projects, so new, you know, new intersection widening or signals and that sort of thing. And the traffic impact fee quantifies the cost of all those and then puts it, puts a per trip or per thousand square feet for commercial fee on it. And in that way, new development can pay a proportional share of the traffic impact that they cause. And that doesn't mean that, that new development doesn't have to actually, or can, can actually be conditioned to construct some of these projects. So for example, there's, there will be instances where developments go in and they're going to cause traffic impacts on the day of opening of the development. In cases like that, they would be, they would be conditioned through the normal public review process to build the traffic facility that mitigates the impact, let's say it's a new signal. And if that, and that's obviously necessary for it to operate today. The traffic impact fee would take care of the longer term, the 20-year time horizon impacts that that, any individual development would cause in a proportional way. And if a development comes in, for example, and they, and they build one of the facilities that are listed in the, so the traffic impact fee report that's in the council report here, if they build one of the, in whole or in part, one of the facilities identified in here that the fee's being collected for, there's also a mechanism to apply credit back to the developer. So in other words, if, if they pay $100,000 in traffic impact fees and they have to construct facilities that are part of the traffic impact fee program worth $100,000, they essentially offset each other. All right, so. And within the staff report, there's two different items, just real briefly. One is an ordinance. And so tonight, you'd be introducing an ordinance to implement the traffic impact fee as required by the government code. And then separate from that is a resolution that adopts the traffic impact fee report and the actual fee amounts. And so tonight would be the introduction of the ordinance. If the council introduces it, there would be a second hearing on October 27th, the council meeting. And the resolution, although it's in the staff report and it looks official, what I'd ask is that the resolution isn't actually, we'll have a public hearing on it tonight, but not actually adopt the resolution tonight. We'll continue that until the 27th and then adopt it concurrent with adoption of the ordinance. And that's okay, of course, because the traffic impact fee and the resolution can't be implemented anyway until the ordinance is adopted. So with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. And my understanding too is that this is something that developers support so that they have a known fixed cost before they begin the project, is that correct?
Yeah, so one of the things it does do is it provides a fixed cost to the improvements. And from a development perspective, having cost certainty is much more important than you get into a development, you don't really know what you're going to be on the hook through conditioning or whatever to build. And that's, that's no more true than Highway 116 where you're also dealing with Caltrans. And those potential improvements, if they're not defined through a program like this, can balloon into an unmanageable amount that you're not aware of when you start the project, but that's what happened to the Commons project in the past. So yeah, they, there's several developers that are, that are waiting for this to be implemented.
Okay, thank you. So I'll bring it to the council first, if we have any questions or comments for staff at this time. No, nothing on this side? Anything on this side? Councilmember Lehman.
There we go. So one of the things I think we're all concerned about was comparing where our traffic impact fees, how they would play out with the rest of the region, as a way of just self-moderating in looking through. I found it, first of all, the information was there, thank you. The difficulty, of course, was I noticed that most of the others were much more diverse, less streamlined than ours, which, which is a good thing. I find that, number one, ours seems more streamlined and less costly overall, at least when I add up all the different small ways that you can be, have an impact fee that you're required to pay. So the general question, I guess, with this is I just want to confirm our best analysis, despite this being somewhat lower, this is sufficient to do the job to provide this certainty for developers and businesses that are looking in the region as well as protecting taxpayers from ultimately being on the hook for any issues that might arise from development.
Right, that's correct. It, it not only protects taxpayers from having to pay for the impacts that other people are causing, it also provides cost certainty for developers so that they can quantify what the cost of development is, which helps them.
Yeah, I personally like the clarity of it and the brevity of it. I thought that was helpful. I think that most of our developers are dealing probably with binders that are this deep constantly, something where they can get a quick answer and they know what they're on the hook for. It's a good thing.
Okay, so, sorry, Vice President Moore, yes.
The previous resolutions would stand or would they need to be eliminated or superseded by the newest?
Right, so when, at the next, what else proposing is the next meeting on October 27th, when the resolution for the fee program is, is adopted ideally, concurrent with that would be.
The solution on the old ones?
Yeah, the old resolutions would be superseded and no longer in effect.
Yeah, thank you.
Absolutely. All right, so at this point, I'll open it up for public comment. If there's anybody who'd like to comment on either the ordinance or the resolution that we're looking at for the October 27th meeting, please come forward. Yes, Mr. Hancock.
Yes, good evening, council. Thank you. I was hoping to do a bit more research on this today, but I got sidetracked onto some other things that prevented me, so I didn't send you a letter on this and I apologize. The issue I raised last time, and I think it's still a relevant issue, is that the new development along Highway 116 essentially is going to be subsidized by the rest of development in Katati. So it just seems to me that there should be some separation and defining areas. Now, I think this is a trend in California. It's certainly been commented on at the planning conference that there is infill development that essentially has to pay more because under this plan, if you look at it, 75% of it is on the Highway 116 area. It's new roads, absolutely expected, so those areas would actually be paid. So I'm just wondering why that isn't taken into account when looking at this. It's a very clear, simple dividing line that there's a lot of new development in one area and that would pay for its development as it actually goes along. And the rest of the development that would happen in the city would be at a lower, lower development impact, but there are higher costs within those areas. So that's just my question is, and I don't know if it can be answered, I don't know whether, it certainly isn't there in Petaluma. When you look at Petaluma's costs, it isn't there in other places, but it's been commented on from a, from a high level point of view that it's a trend in, in California that it's more difficult to do building inside a city because there's higher costs and they're subsidizing essentially the development outside. So it's a general question. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to comment on the proposed ordinance or also the resolution that we're talking about continuing till October 27th? All right, seeing none, I will ask that we continue the matter to the October 27th meeting at 7:00 PM when we'll be able to address both.
The resolution piece.
Yes, okay. The resolution piece, yes.
But we're looking for a motion or something on the ordinance, correct?
Yes.
Before we go that way, is there a way to address that concern regarding the equitability of the fees throughout the city and if it does make more sense or has, I'm assuming that that may have been taken into consideration?
Yes, it was considered as well as a lot of other potential permutations of how the fee could be structured. And so just from a practical perspective, the fee, the fee itself is, is very much in line in terms of cost with other cities. Katati is a small city, so there's not, typically when you see zones, you typically see them in much bigger cities. And it also, when you create zones, it also creates, it also limits your flexibility to address development impacts. So for example, you can't, as a city, you can't control what part of the city develops at what time. And if you were to collect funds over here in this zone, those funds can't be used to address an issue in the other zone. And so it creates an artificial division that, that precludes you from addressing impacts that you need to address. If, you know, in other words, if you have, I guess maybe just state it more succinctly, if you, if you're collecting, you know, smaller amounts of fees in one spot and you have a real impact there because there's development or, you know, there's development that happens there, but it doesn't accrue enough money to actually do anything, but you have a real impact, you can't deal with it because you have this artificial division of funds to enable you the flexibility to address impacts as they actually occur due to the, the timing of development throughout the city. So anyway, the conclusion at the end of all that was that it, it's a better approach to take a citywide approach, both given the fact that the fee is very typical of an impact fee in this area. So it shouldn't be a surprise to anyone. It's not unusual by any means. The city's small, traffic does use, the roads on both sides of the freeway is a practical matter. And it doesn't limit our flexibility to address the traffic impacts as they actually occur, regardless of where they occur in the city.
Thank you.
Okay, so if I understand correctly, then we're looking to make a motion to introduce the ordinance and then we'll be voting on the ordinance and adopting, adoption next meeting on the 27th. Okay, thank you.
With that, Madam Mayor, I'd like to move that we introduce an ordinance permitting the levying collection of the updated traffic impact fee.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? May the record show it's a five oh vote in favor of introducing of the ordinance at this time and then we'll continue the hearing to October 27th. Thank you. So we have no items on the regular agenda and no items under correspondence and pending legislation, so we'll move on to the city manager's report. And again, Mr. Obed.
So, yes, my favorite part of the evening, I've been waiting for this. We have, as you probably noticed, a new landscape where the lawn used to be in front of City Hall. We talked about that at the last meeting, but now it's actually, it's actually there. So you can, you can see, and actually, I'm, just on a personal level, I'm impressed that it actually looks nice because I, I've done, just done my own house in other places, low water landscapes, and usually the first year you plant them, it's very underwhelming because the plants are very small, they haven't grown out yet. But these are actually fairly mature and fairly well-planted, so it looks nice. And this, this lawn conversion in front of City Hall was designed by Equinox Landscapes and the project management was by Daily Axe, who, as you know, we work with. And the work was performed by the Conservation Corps North Bay and the Youth Ecology Corps. They did the labor. You probably, you might have seen them if you drove by in their green hard hats, all out there tearing the lawn up. And this work was funded entirely by the Sonoma County Water Agency through, here's a great new acronym, PERPA, which is their, it's basically Joint Powers Authority that the water agency is part of. The power, they share power through various agencies in the, in the Pacific Northwest. The power, they share power through various agencies in the, in the Pacific Northwest. The agency's called PURPA, they're part of it, and they wheel power through it. So, anyway, they, the funding came from PURPA Cap and Trade Funding, so it's one of the first instances I can think of with the AB 32, you know, greenhouse gas reduction laws that have been put in place over the last, maybe 10 years now. They're actually starting to roll out with some practical effects, so that, this is one example of it. There was also, as I think you know, and it was mailed out to all the residents in Kattati, a program that was part of the same program to sheet mulch people's, like residential lawns. And in Kattati, we had, we had six resident, residential properties take up the offer before, they had 30 total, and it filled up almost like the day that it opened, so six people were lucky enough to get in, you know, get in before the call volume, even the call center got, you know, jammed and shut down. So, that was, of course, free to residents, and I expect we'll be talking to them about now that they sheet mulched actually planting them through our cash for gas program the city runs. Another thing, just a reminder, that the city has a safe medicine disposal drop-off bin in the lobby of the police station, where anyone can take their unused or expired medications for proper disposal. And the program in Kattati is run by the subregional wastewater treatment plant, which is where we send our wastewater for treatment and disposal. And as was discussed at our last meeting, this is, this is the mechanism we have in place to try to ensure that these kind of medications don't end up in the wastewater or the landfill, even though it is not the most efficient or cost-effective way to do it. It is a mechanism that's available right now. And then, finally, I will just say that Draper Park, if you've driven by in the last week or so, you might have noticed that there's been work done on the lighting there in the park. And Draper Park has a series of bollard lights out there, and they were those old, the old style bollard lights that were susceptible to damage, and they were continually being damaged. And, you know, both, both creating, you know, creating, you know, an issue with lighting during night, and also creating a sort of a maintenance issue for the city. And the new bollards, the foundations are done, and the new bollards will be set shortly, and they're the style that you may have seen in front of McGinn's Circle, so they're much more robust, and they should greatly reduce the amount of maintenance that are required on them. So, that should be in operation within the next couple of weeks, I would think. So, that's, that's exciting news for me. And one more thing I'll leave you with that I neglected to mention about the lawn replacement, about, this is about the, the overall program with 30, 30 residential lawns and three demonstration sites, we were one of the three, that were conducted by the water agency. So, it was done over 30, 30 days, like I mentioned, 30 residential lawns replaced, three model sites. There was two educational field trips done, 43,000 total square feet, which is more than a football field worth of turf taken out. An estimated 724,000 gallons per year of water saved, which is more than an Olympic swimming pool in capacity. 129 yards of compost was used, 57 rolls of cardboard, 392 yards of mulch, 387 native drought-tolerant plants and trees, 12 fruit trees, and 64 culinary herbs, which I'm not sure if we have any in our, but they're out there in one of these demonstration sites. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you for that. Moving to questions and comments from the council.
Rosemary, we have Rosemary.
Oh, there you go, question answered. We have Rosemary. All right, fantastic. So, yes, Mr. Berge.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank the city staff for that report. The landscape in front of City Hall appears to look very nice on first inspection. What was missing from the report tonight is, we found out who paid for it, but we didn't know how much that cost, actually in hard dollars, to replace, to do that work out in front of City Hall. The other issue is that the citizens never got a chance, apparently, to speak on the matter of changing the landscaping in front of City Hall. This is an historic building with historic landscape. That lawn has been out there for decades, and how did it get past City City Council and the citizens to put this in the hands of the city manager to do that, that major landscaping redesign? This is something like the city logo. The city logo's been reworked a couple of times as well, without citizen input. This is a bad habit the city's gotten into, where our public buildings are being reworked and redesigned without public input. Also, I want to thank the police department for stepping up and allowing for the, the medications to come in all hours of the day. I think this is a wonderful opportunity for people to come in and say hello to the people in the police department who serve us, and it should be a good public relations aspect as well. That's a safe location, and as, as the city manager said, it's also a cost-efficient solution for the time being. Now, regarding Draper Park, as many of you well know, a few, a few of us citizens, citizens sit up and were concerned in the planning of Draper Park, that those lighting instruments would be a, a maintenance hazard and would be constantly in need of repair. This got passed the planning department, it got passed the planning commission, who approved it, over my objection. We warned the city that this would be a maintenance nightmare for the city, it would cost the city, the city and the citizens more dollars, and the truth is, this has actually happened. We don't have money to do it right the first time, but we have money to do it over the second time. This is a real embarrassment. The city was too arrogant, and the planning department, the planning commission was too arrogant to listen to the citizen input, that those were ridiculous lighting instruments at four feet high to put out there at, at Draper Park. And I want it, be put on the record that citizens did complain about it, and we were, we were overlooked, and our concerns were marginalized. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to comment on the city manager's report? Yes, Ms. Alderman.
I know, this is, this is just going to be an emotional comment. I'm really tired of hearing about landscape and gardens and everything, because we haven't been able for two year, two harvest seasons now, eat our fruit, any of our plants because of the, the contamination in our yard. Something needs to be done. We don't need to wait to the new year, which Vicki's plan seems to be, because if we wait till November 28th, it's, that's what's going to happen.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to comment on the city manager's report on the landscaping, safe meds? And my understanding is the safe meds drop-off was, had already been located in the police department, and they're just continuing it, is that correct? I don't remember seeing it there before.
It's, yeah, within the last month is when they, I think it was, Oliver's used to host the safe men drop-off, and then that was moved to the police department.
Okay, thank you. So, we'll move on from city manager's report. If there's nobody else wants to make public comment, all right, call close public comment, and bring it back for city council reports. So, I'll start on my right. Councilmember Delasso.
Great, I have just one. Two or three Saturdays ago, there was a Sonoma County Library Advocacy Summit, and it was up at the Finley Center. There must have been over 100 people that were in there from electeds, from all the jurisdictions, and numerous people from the library community and the friends of the libraries from across the county. It was a, an all-day session, but it was trying to look at what are some of the ways to bring back the hours that have been cut, the public hours, which were the Mondays, cut from the library system six or seven years ago due to budget concerns. And it was interesting to find out that for every $1,000 of property tax, the library system gets like 22 cents, which may sound like a little or a lot of money, I'm not sure, but it's the same since 1978. That's not good, because we know inflation is this one factor that's been skyrocketing that whole time. So, so, it's a similar amount of money that's coming in, but not able to keep up. And our, our library system is pretty phenomenal in the fact that it, you know, you can, you can be in Petaluma, and you can put a hold on a book that's up in Windsor, and the next day, it can literally be in your hands, if everything works out right. So, this was more of a strategy session to kind of look at, you know, what can we do sort of long-term for our library system in this county, which is a great system. And there'll be more meetings that come of this, so our two representatives were there, our Kattati appointee, Hillary Smith, and also Linda Garcia was there, who's the county-slash- City of Santa Rosa appointee, so it was nice to see both of them there. So, there'll be more to come from that. I, I plan on being knee-deep and involved, I think, in this issue, because it's kind of near and dear, so, and if there's opportunities for additional public meetings, you know, I can bring those in advance here, so people can hear about them, and anybody would be welcome to come. That's all, thanks.
All right, great, thank you. Councilmember Harkey.
So, last Thursday, I attended the mayor's and council members' meeting, and there were two very good presentations on homelessness and consolidation, or possible consolidation of fire services within Sonoma County. And then, on Sunday, I participated at the Oktoberfest, and it was fun, the weather was great, and I really enjoyed myself, and that's all.
All right, great, thank you. Councilmember Lammon.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's been a busy couple of weeks. We talked a little bit about the Extranet Producer Responsibility Ordinance, we talked about here last time, and it was actually brought up by one of our people in the audience. Unfortunately, he's already left, which is too bad, because I knew I was going to mention in my report, and I wanted to mention, this actually is, at least, was put together as the thought is saving our local taxpayers dollars. Right now, all of us, everybody in this room, all of our constituents are footing the bill for this. So, the idea is to get them some help with that, and most importantly, to protect their drinking water environment too. But I just wanted to update you. Last time we met, we'd been to Sebastopol, and then Kattati, where we had, thank you both, unanimous support for a letter of conceptual support for this. Since then, Heelsberg has done this and come forward with unanimous vote of support. Windsor-Hurtis has an information item, and it indicated strong support. They're bringing it back at their next meeting, and I expect a thumbs up there. And tonight at 5:00, we were over visiting Ronat Parks Council meeting. Fortunately, it starts a little earlier than ours, so I was able to juggle the two and make this work. But they heard it, and they're going to bring it back, and I suspect will get support there as well. So, we are more than halfway through the cities in the county. We got five cities, it looks like, on board. I'm counting a couple of my chickens early, but I think that's the direction it's going. And we have some very good coverage in the Sonoma West Times and News recently, too, a pretty in-depth story about which I think was helpful, so that's good. And lastly, just a quick reminder, although I think our outgoing mayor already knows it, we're going on a road trip this Friday, 9:00 in Sonoma, at the City of Sonoma Emergency Operations Center. I have the address, which I can share with you, but we'll be having a legislative meeting with Senator Wolk and Assembly Member Levine. So, it proves to be interesting, we're going to have a good turnout, we'll have more than a quorum, I think, so looking forward to it. And again, if there's any, I will put it out to staff and the council, and any areas of concern, you want answers, or things you want to put forward, let me know. Time's getting short, we'd be happy to do it, so, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. And Vice Mayor Moore.
Last Thursday, we had our board meeting for REMIF, and the implementation of the Self-Net Health Plan is going well. A lot of the cities are on board, and they haven't had any major glitches in reference to enrollment. They've had a few things, but it's going pretty well. The, the technological component of REMIF is coming to the 21st century, and the online enrollments and things like that will make administration much easier. We are going to have a slight increase in our liability costs through the pools because of miscellaneous accidents and motorcycle replacements and things like that. And we are going to have a slight increase in our, our workers' comp due to some of the factors involved in there, but they are not overly significant, and of course, it helps being spread across the pool. So, I don't, I forgot to bring those exact figures, but they are, I want to say, less than 10, I think, in a worker's comp, and less than two in a liability or something like that, close to those areas. And then, my only other report would be on the teen night, again, at the library, tomorrow night, from 6:00 to 7:30. So, I think that they're, they're very excited about having that space available just for teenagers.
Will there be any pizza there?
There will be pizza.
Really?
And prizes, iPads and things like that. Thank you.
Okay, absolutely. And then, I just have a couple of things. We touched already on Oktoberfest, that was a lot of fun, it was a great turnout. I attended the League Annual Conference in San Jose from September 30th to October 2nd, and came back with a lot of information and booty bags for everybody. So, I've been pestering our city manager with new ideas, which always seems to happen after we go to these conferences and brainstorm with everybody, so very charged up about that, so that was great. Had a water board conference call on September 25th. And then also, I would highly recommend this to anybody who's able to. I attended on the 24th the Conservation Corps graduation ceremony, and it was right here in the Kattati room behind us, and it was just really inspiring and moving to see these kids who had overcome so much and gotten a second chance to get their GED and, and really get that goal. So, it's something that a lot of us, I think, take for granted, that, you know, you go through school and everything's fine, and there were different stories about people, I'm not getting choked up, I'm really just dry-throat here, but, you know, young women who had gotten pregnant and had to be dropped out and, and overcome those challenges, and then to be there with a mortarboard and with this little two-year-old girl who kept standing up yelling, "Hi mommy!", you know, it was just really sweet. So, that was a great experience, and I highly recommend it for anybody to, to go and see Sony people appreciating what a lot of us take for granted, and really valuing the, the skills that they had achieved, so that was great. And I was actually moved to speak, they didn't even, had, they just opened it up for anybody to come forward, and Mr. Delasso would be very pleased, because I did open with a joke saying that I thought it was karaoke night, and I took a wrong turn somewhere, but I wanted to comment anyway. So, you would have appreciated my getting a laugh right at the beginning of my, my talk. So, anyway, with that, I will adjourn our meeting at 9:07 PM. Thank you very much, everybody. But I really didn't think it was yet here, Bobby.